Called the meeting to order. Cause I I have a hard stop at two.
Okay.
Sorry, I can't go on all day. As much as I love to.
All right then, uh we'll call the meeting to order. Um, I think we have to do a roll call because we're all on Zoom. So Latrell here.
Hulihan here.
Demiria here.
Bracio here.
Alright, so away we go.
Who would you like to start? Do you want to give them the low down of the meeting?
I'll give them a quick update since I like to talk. Um, so we had a very productive meeting this morning with Bowler Engineering to review the um, updated spreadsheet that Marnie had provided right after the last working session, which prioritized um, six locations for proposed MBTA communities overlay areas. Colleen had also provided Bowler with the maps at that point um prior to the holidays and um we were unclear as what to the, what lo- what kind of effort a um running the compliance model really meant. So in following up with them um with Bowler, they clarified to us that running a compliance model without having really defined the overlay areas to a level that is extremely close um to what we're going with is a very heavy lift um for many factors. There's input from um excluded properties is the parcels that have to be identified, the underlying zoning, in addition to the MBTA communities criteria. So Marnie, I know that you had um a task email um prior to the holidays, um hoping for a report back today from Bowler um before this meeting. So the reason that there's not an actual report is because um they needed more final information on the areas. And so we worked.
We hadn't narrowed it down enough.
So we worked that out this morning um and we have some really good feedback for you um for the board on um the options that we should move forward with and we're hoping the board will agree and if there's any tweaking, we can do some last minute tweaking if need be. So Colleen, go ahead. You can continue with.
Okay, so Mimi attended the meeting as well. Um and I have the maps that we changed. And so basically we did the different areas. We went down um from the most wanted one down. We did go down that um rubric and
The highest scoring.
Yes, yes. Um, so area six was the highest scoring. So um we have we came up with two options and I'm going to show you the maps. I can show you hers or I can show you mine.
So as, so as as submitted um after our last meeting with um some of the parcels removed because they were uh historic properties, there it was a non-contiguous um area and was, I was finding it hard to find two five acre parcels out of what was left. So we worked on that to try and come up with something that was contiguous um this morning.
Can I just ask for clarity? Because I feel like there's a gap in information from where we last left off. I understand that there's been a review. So what we shared and what um what people have access to is what our priority list of um highest priority highest priorities were six, twenty-one, fourteen, seven, nine, and eleven.
Correct.
Am I hearing that those are no longer the six that we're talking about? Is there a new? They're still six, twenty-one, fourteen, seven, nine, and eleven?
Yeah, sorry to not be clear. So this morning we started with the priority list and we started from the number one priority and looked at the mapping. And Bowler explained to us that there were non-contiguous portions that weren't allowing to have compliant areas. Um, so we had to kind of figure out the size of the parcels and come up with ten acres. Um, minimum five acres pieces.
So you were furthering refining within those prioritized areas. So we're still within those priority. Okay. So that's number one question, comment and clarity. Thank you. Number two is there was an email communication um that was recently um that came in from uh a a an exterior per uh person, some public comment that came in that proposed area seven, um specifically the EMC Dell property be considered and they asked for us to reevaluate that waiting. Is that something that this team, this this planning board is going to be doing today is reevaluating our waiting based on their public comment? And have there been any other public comment that has come in?
So I have not received other public comments than from that entity and um
And though, those parcels were number, were area number one when we did the uh walk through the criteria criteria, our last meeting. So they didn't it didn't score as high as the others.
Um, wait, so I I thought they were I thought seven is still part of our top six prioritized areas.
Seven is, but those two parcels which made up thirty-six acres were one section unto itself.
I see. Okay. Oh, that's the one we called out. Okay. Okay, so those are off the table.
Unless, unless it's up to the board whether they want to reevaluate, but we did, we did put it through the criteria.
I did indicate to the um opponent that um we weren't anticipating public comment during this um working session, but that we will be required to have a public hearing for zoning amendment. And that at would be at that time that um we could entertain actually any input that he wanted to present um to the planning board members to be more, you know, he could speak to it and address any questions that the planning board has at that time. But in order to meet the um the intense schedule for Bowler to provide bylaw in addition to a compliant model um we need to get them what we're starting with right now refined. Um, and they actually wanted it by the end of the day today. So, and I said, well, it most likely will be tomorrow that we can you know, find, you know, get them the information based on today's working session if everything goes well. So um that that entity understood that and appreciated that feedback.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I think the public hearing process is the best place for that.
Hi Jessie, welcome.
Apologies, uh we
we started, just started. Marnie has a hard stop, so we thought would kick things off.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So um what I put up on the screen is um area six and there's laid out in options. We went through this um, so this area here is no longer valid. This here is, I can't see all of my screens.
Oh, well, let me just, let me, let me explain a little bit to help you, Colleen. So this here represents area number six. And the orange areas is what we had um
Through the public.
Prelimarily defined as the areas through the mapping sessions and um the work prior working session. So during today's meeting um uh informational meeting with the engineer, they indicated there were gaps that we couldn't get the size areas needed because there were parcels missing in between. So what you see are the red line hatched areas are the areas that were contemplated to be added um with the caveat that um number forty, which is uh Fitzgerald Store, which is a historic property um was not something that the planning board wanted to include um based on prior feedback. So um the option was to um add um in the um, the red striped areas is a lot, one, two, and three, one being the interior of the triangle at the intersection there. And two and three are two parcels. One is owned by the DCR, I think, um or the state. So um Bowler did clarify that you can have excluded land in the areas of um the overlay areas. It's just that they impact the density of the units overall for compliance. So if you have more wetland in the areas you're picking and more excluded lands, what happens is you don't get your fifteen units per acre on that parcel, but or in that area, but it's gauged by the overall area that the town is dedicating to MBTA communities. So you, if you can't get the density per se here because it's too much wetland, you can pick up that average with other areas that allow you more density. Um, so that came into play here. Um, they also indicated that you can have a single lot um as a overlay district.
If it fits the over the five acres.
Yeah, if it fits the minimum area, um but you cannot like cross lots. In other words, you need to follow parcel lines and that streets in between the lots were considered creating lots to be contiguous.
Okay.
Or areas to be contiguous. So those were three very helpful facts that we confirmed this morning. So here we have two options. On the west is the orange shaded squares we already had and then the red hatched areas and it's outlined in blue. You can't really see
Did you see that one?
Blue outline. Yeah, if you see, see, there's like a blue outline.
Yep. So that, so that's both A and B, one and two together.
No, this one is just one.
So the blue goes all the way down to thirty-one, which wasn't included in the
Yeah, Colleen, you added too much on the right there on the east.
It does go.
No, the yellow went all the way over.
So that's, so there's two options, the one that's outlined in blue that yeah, and then the one that's outlined in yellow. So it's the corner of um.
So what you just showed us was the second option is the yellow option, not the blue option.
Yeah, you shouldn't, yeah, don't look at the second map. Look, just look at this one. And the blue area that's outlined starts with the big parcel just south, just to the east of Fitzgerald. There's like a big, the biggest pink parcel. Go a little bit further right, Colleen, with the hand. Keep going.
That one, right there.
Yeah, that, but it also includes number forty-two on the east side of um River Street. Anyway, that consists, the west side of this consists of ten point five acres. And then the yellow outline was in a secondary option, which also consisted of approximately ten plus or plus acres. Um, so to meet the ten acres within the half mile radius, these were the two options. Um, and again, the one on the left side outlined in blue, I don't believe that included the Fitzgerald parcel.
No.
So we had ten point five acres there without that parcel, but adding to the north, those three triangular parcels in the intersection. Which they said was allowable.
Yeah, so the um, excuse me, the triangular um option in the center is goes with both. This, it makes, makes it able to be contiguous. So these are in both. This is option two, which is the blue line.
Well, I think that was the option one. That was the favored one, I thought.
I called it two. I did the other one first, so.
Okay, so.
But the, but those aren't in both.
These are.
No, they're not. So this, so the second one includes those historic homes. So it includes that one parcel that's owned by hospitality management or something. That's at the corner and goes up, but it excludes the um the Triangle Park and the Commonwealth of Mass parcel, but it includes those three um historic buildings.
And lot three.
To make it.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
See, so it's kind of tough.
Okay, so I, yeah, I just added two and one to um my app option one that I I shouldn't have, so I'll take those out. Um So you said I wasn't supposed to go all the way down to thirty-one? That's in the yellow that.
They were talking about option one.
Yeah, there are two different options. So the yellow option goes down to thirty-one, the blue option does not.
Okay.
The blue option goes more west, the yellow option.
Gotcha. So so this area two and one don't need to be here. Um, we'll start at three right here. So I'll fix that.
So I think the other map is better, to be honest.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
And and so to a process point, um Mimi, do, are we gonna just vote on these? Um, and then if we're, there's not a unanimous vote or if there's not a majority vote, we discuss?
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan.
So do you want to go through all the areas first?
Well, we should make sure that what you're voting on is crystal clear. So that there's no confusion here because the the mapping was done very quickly this afternoon by Bowler here. And Colleen was trying to like formulate a clearer map of this, but it takes a little bit of time to do that. But this is the best map. And the blue outline, for all intensive purposes, was option one, which included the west side of this map, but not Fitzgerald Store. Option two was the yellow outlined, which included um what you see there in pink plus lot three where her hand is right now. Um, and also the hatched pieces right there, but it did not include the three little individual lots north there. That that didn't make sense to have them in there and some of those in between were removed because they were historic. Alright, so those are the two options here and both are approximately ten point something acres.
Do we need a couple of options? I mean, thinking about what we're going to put forward for warrant articles, is it?
So what she explained to us is that when you start putting this through the um compliance model, it does take into account wetlands that are on some of these parcels and excluded land. So she may have to tweak it a little bit by adding, you know, a couple of parcels. So we had some options on each while we looked at. So that we had some wiggle room to make it work. Um, but yeah, these aren't necessarily the you know, exact districts, but this is what we want her to put through the compliance model, map out and put through the compliance. It has to be in the map first.
Go ahead, Jessie.
Where do you go?
You're a mute.
Hi, thank you. So um I have some questions about this diagram.
Okay.
There appears to be a blue line on the south side. It's vertical. It cuts through the red box that says three point five acres.
Oh, there's a stream there.
South? No, not that.
Oh.
So south of Southville Road. Yep, there's a brox up to the right.
Yep.
Yep, and they just passed it. See that blue line? It's vertical.
Yep.
There's also, it appears a yellow line on the blue line.
Yes, there are.
Yeah.
I'm finding that a little confusing. Can that please be explained?
So those parcels, um, I can't really see the numbers, forty-two.
Can you zoom in a little bit, Colleen?
Thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Yeah.
And three are in both the yellow option and the blue option.
Yeah, right here, this area is in both options. So these will definitely be part of your bylaw.
Colleen, why don't you run the hand once around the yellow boundary? So start at one corner and just run the ba- yellow boundary.
That was helpful.
Okay, and if you do the same for the blue.
I'll start in the same spot.
Okay. Okay, got it.
They're just not transparent.
The red stripes, those are areas that are out of compliance with the bylaw? Is that correct?
So the red stripes were um well, a couple of things. The uh parcel forty and then the thirty-six, thirty-five, thirty-four, those are um historic properties that we removed from the running.
I recall that, okay.
The, our last meeting. And then one is that Triangle Park, so it's excluded property and two is uh mass. Yeah, so, so that's excluded too, but we found out today that you can use excluded property to make properties contiguous.
Yeah.
So that's what they're in there for.
And lots eight, eleven, and thirteen, what is the status of those and are they included in either of these options?
No, those were removed because some of them are those historic mill homes. And the other ones, the lots are so teeny that they really don't add any acreage. So.
And what, sorry, sorry, me.
So they just, so they just X them out.
Okay, so what is the total acreage of the blue versus the yellow?
I was just working on that. I didn't get to finish it. Um.
So we know the blue is approximately ten point five acres. Um, we hadn't established the yellow one yet, but we figured it was approximately in the ten acre range.
Okay, so my last, so they're about ten acres each. So my last question is about uh what constitutes contiguous? Because it doesn't appear, okay, uh do railroad tracks? For example, lots thirty-six, thirty-seven, and forty-two, are we a hundred percent sure that those are considered contiguous?
Yes, she verified that today.
Okay.
Bowler verified that, yes.
What about the fact that so thirty-six, thirty-seven, and forty-two are part of both options?
They overlap, yeah. Yeah.
There appears to be those do not appear to be contiguous to me, to either of the other lot options.
Well, they are um, because you'd have to add in that parcel three and then those hatched one and two, and then that makes it contiguous with those others on.
Okay, even though they're ineligible?
Yes, yes.
That's what minus, this is what I did for option two. This is what your option one you're talking about.
What happens, Jessie, let me explain. Yeah, what happens, Jessie, is that you can have an area that includes excluded land, but you can't use that to build on. So it reduces your density from the required fifteen units per acre to some lesser units per acre. But they, Bow- Bowler explained that you just need an overall average fifteen units per acre in your entire cumulative districts.
Okay, I'm sorry to belabor this.
No, it's good.
It's good that you understand it.
I don't have a compelling like preference personally. It seems like from a planning standpoint, there's not a huge difference to me and hopefully my fellow board members will educate me on why one option is better than the other. Because at this point, I wouldn't know how to vote.
And I had something, Mimi?
Absolutely. So Jessie, when I look at the yellow and I look at the blue, I try to think instead of of kind of spreading it all within one neighborhood, I look at the blue as Cordova or River Street, Cordova Road kind of being a separating factor, if you will. So it's kind of spread on both sides of eighty-five. So um instead of just having it all down Southfield, heading towards Ashland, you know, that that's a huge impact all on one neighborhood. So that's why I'm looking more towards the blue, because it gives some, a small level of separation being the road. But it's, it's not um it's not all specifically centered in one straight line for neighborhood. There's a little bit of a break with the excluded land and everything. So that's just, that's just my two cents.
That makes sense. I mean, unless somebody has a better, something that is more compelling than that, I'll probably vote blue.
Debbie's got her hand up.
Go ahead, Debbie.
So it's questions. I don't have something more compelling. So the the land that's DCR and the park, the hatched area, when we create zoning, how does it read in the future that that land can't be zoned for high density?
It'll be in the zone, but it's owned by the state, so it can't be used.
So can we look at the hatched area that that's triangle? I think it's one, two, and three. So just make sure I know what it is. So three is like a parking area, right? That little, little tiny triangle?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so on one and two, is one the park?
Yeah.
And is that owned by the town? Not DCR.
Southborough, yes, it's owned by the town of Southborough. Can you see?
So the town could in the future, if they wanted to transfer that to a developer and make that, that would become high density housing. Because it's in the zone. I'm just trying to anticipate, I'm just trying to think through like, what does that mean? Because it's currently a park. But not all land is going to be owned by the town in the future. So if it's my question is, if it's in the zone um and the land conveys to private developer, it could potentially one day be built. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then what's two? I can't, I can't quite picture what two is. I just don't remember from my notes. Is it? What is two?
Just, it's uh
It's owned by the Commonwealth, so I'm assuming it was some sort of area near the road.
Ah, so that's the DCR land. So that one seems to me is state and that's outside of MBTA, right?
Yeah, it's Commonwealth of Mass, not MBTA.
Commonwealth, so that one, okay, that's not likely to convey to a private developer. I'm not saying it's likely that a park will convey, but I just, it seems to me unless there's some sort of exclusionary zoning, if it's zoned and that could be a future board could sell lot one to a developer. So I just wanted to make sure if I understood that correctly. And my other question is for town meeting, if we're going to have a couple of different options or maybe are, what are we thinking? Are we thinking put forward one option and have a backup plan? Or are we thinking two different warrant articles and let the voters pick which parcels they prefer?
The way I understand it is we're supposed to finalize it here today. Um, and there's different options for you to decide from, and the board will pick the areas that will become finalized. And there are areas around that we've identified that if something doesn't work, they could use, you know, maybe an extra lot here. And so we had sort of identified uh what we want you guys to choose from.
Okay. So just to understand, so like, let's say we pick blue because I like Lisa's argument is compelling also. Um, and if it does, if it doesn't pass or if there's a proposal at town meeting for another option or something, I don't know. It could be that we at some point in the future go look at the yellow. Is that is that sort of how to look at it? Okay, thank you.
So we have, so this compliance model, which gives us an idea of whether all this effort is gonna actually uh comply with what the state's looking for. They'll do two for us. They'll do whatever we initially come up with and run it through the compliance model to make sure that it complies and then one other. So we don't have, we can't offer a bunch of options at town meeting and if things are changed on the map, there's no guarantee that they'll comply.
And what this exercise did this morning with the engineering firm is that um say the blue area, they run the compliance model and they need something additional. There is potential to consider a piece that's in the yellow that's contiguous to maybe add to that if it needed to be. You know what I mean, it gives an understanding, although we don't want to do that because adding is more difficult in the compliance model. So um, you know, I think they felt pretty comfortable with, you know, the options that we're describing here. But again, it hasn't been run through the model. So I think it's one or the other, and then the ones that aren't picked become like a backup. Resource.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Just a quick thing, and I'm kind of on Debbie's point, that that actually was some great questions, Debbie, can we check and find out because? Um, one is a park, does that have any article, what is it, Article ninety-seven? Uh, protections on it because it is a park, is that something we can find out, Corina?
We were told by Bowler that it could be counted, so they've been doing this and they're working with several municipalities. We thought it couldn't be counted, she said for area wise, you can count it.
So I get that piece, so you're 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 adding it, you're counting it, but it may have some level of protection. Under, you know, a park, I I don't know, I mean, that's just.
Like a subdivision had in the past, like one of the other areas, the subdivision had a covenant that restricted. Things on it as well.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it does, but it's, I I.
I'm not clear if those excluded lands are used just. To make the parcels contiguous, whether they'll be part of the zoning overlay, like streets. Are excluded also, but they're used to make the parcels contiguous, but you know. No one's gonna sell a street in zone on that, so. I'm not sure if those, and I'll have to check, and maybe um. Bowler can give us the answer to that, Colleen, whether those parcels will actually have the overlay on them, or if they're just being used. To make those parcels contiguous.
With what she said this morning, she wanted to add those to make that side contiguous.
Correct.
And then have that option, so, but I will definitely ask.
Well, I don't know if they'll be, if the zoning will overlay those specific parcels, because they're excluded.
Well, you, it have to, because you'd have to have the zoning crossing those parcels to get to the other side, so they would have to be zoned. Not that it would make any difference.
Just like a wetland, the difference is that a wetland is protected by state. Clean water act, so I can see the point here, you know, one is just a piece of town property that's excluded right now, because it's town property.
And it's a park, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good question.
Okay. So, but either one of these options at this point appeared to satisfy the requirement of ten acres in within the half mile radius.
So to get a better picture, should we go over the other areas as well, and then they'll have a holistic view of what happened?
So, so I'm gonna be clear, I don't think I have time, um, I think we should try and go section by section and vote. Um, if that works out, I'm happy to weigh in after the fact, but um, I I mean, I think we should just try and quickly, I mean, this is not a quick process. Unfortunately.
I think this was the most complicated one, because.
This is the most difficult one. The other, the other ones, there's the option of having this in just one other parcel. Or the other thing was um, this in two, two other overlays, so either two or three were the uh.
Well, Mimi, it seems like we're better off taking voting now, given. Screen on on blue versus yellow.
So this is number area six. And it's gonna be a vote of blue or yellow.
So, given the previous discussion, I'll make the motion that um, at this point in the process. The planning board um, adopt pending the rest of the process. The designated blue section. For the uh, minimum ten acres per the MBTA communities. Bylaw.
Second.
I have a motion in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Hulihian, yes.
Demuri, yes.
Russia, yes.
Very good. What was the next one on our, was it seven?
We want area um.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Area seven is the um, three twenty-five turnpike.
So area um, twenty-one is um. Fine and it will work and um, but we may or not, may. May or may not need it depending on what we choose with area seven. So that's just that.
Yeah, so we should really go to area number seven, because this is confusing, if you go to area seven. Because this is just an add-on to area seven to make up enough acreage. So if you go to map area number seven with the um, three twenty-five turnpike, Ken's Foods.
This is the map I created, but I'll uh.
We don't see it on the screen yet, Colleen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Area seven included Ken's Foods and Madison Place. Um, areas north and south of Route nine on the um, western side of town. So what you see on the screen um, is.
Did Bowler send a map, because that shows both options.
Yeah, this is the one with um, from Bowler.
No, you you, you don't have it, you need area seven from Bowler.
Oh, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm still on twenty-one.
Yeah, and you you shared your screen, you shared your map instead of the Bowler map. That's it right there, so now I just have to share the screen.
You guys can't see it?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
I can see Colleen from here, so I can see what she's doing.
I have three monitors going and I can't see them all, so, there we go.
Alright, so this is area seven, which is what was depicted in the priorities, and to the north you see lot ten, that's Ken's Foods. And to the left and below Route nine is the Madison Place area outlined in yellow. And then there was a backup section highlighted in red right there. So the first option was to just use Ken's Foods with fifty-one point five acres. It does have a lot of wetlands on it around the outskirts, um, it does have concerns with the neighborhood of buttering that. But that was one option, and that would satisfy the entire MBTA communities with what's inside the half mile radius. If we don't consider the ten acre, the lot ten there, then what's outlined in yellow. Was about twenty-eight point five five acres. And that in conjunction with area twenty-one, which Colleen was showing you previously had fourteen acres. Made up forty-two point five five acres, so if you took the yellow from this. And the area on um, area twenty-one, which was um. Yeah, which was near Marlboro.
Oh.
Right, you take that piece and the Madison Square piece, yellow piece. And you'd have forty-two point five five acres plus the ten and a half acres in the half mile radius, put you over the fifty mi- fifty acres.
And then if, if there were certain things in Ken's that didn't make that qualify if you choose it. She could use this adjacent couple of lots, maybe just thirteen or maybe just twelve. To kind of, that's what she's gonna have to tweak, so we sort of picked out those little places that if it doesn't fit the model. She could tweak it a little bit to make it fit.
She could tap into those areas, but in essence, the yellow. In in addition to the fourteen acres near Marlboro Town um, was sufficient at this point. Or the other option was the Ken's Foods.
Question? Um, the little backup area twelve, thirteen, fourteen, are you cutting across property lines and didn't we have to do it by the property line?
No, these are the.
No, those are the three.
Yeah, those are the property lines, I I mean, I may be a little bit off, but so here's twelve till this point.
Oh, got it, so it covers, okay.
Yeah, and then this is thirteen, right in the middle.
Okay.
And I think the yellow area included lot three, right, Colleen?
No, she took that out, because it's all wet, yeah.
Okay, alright, so just that hash, hatched piece was twenty-eight point five, yeah.
Yeah.
In addition to area twenty-one, which was the fourteen point um, fourteen acres approximately. And it wasn't all of area twenty-one, it was just lot seven and twenty-one.
So at this point, like to me, we've we've kind of accomplished a lot by. Oh, coming to a consensus, at least as a board, for the moment, on the the area. Within the half mile radius of the MBTA station. Like, that's a, that's, that's a big thing, and the rest of this. I might be the only one that thinks this way, we could kind of hash out at the public hearing stage. I understand we have to have something prior to that. So, but I just want to put it out there, the path of least resistance might just be to go with the Ken's Foods. Piece for now as a placeholder and. You know, see how we do in the public hearings.
So the issue with that um, is that. They need the parcels to be identified to run it through the model and find out what happens. After they run out, you know, Ken's, if you choose Ken's, they may find out that it's not fifty acres. You know, you may need to add something over here.
Right, and then we would, we would reconvene in another working, because that'll be well before the public hearings, right, Colleen?
Well, it takes two weeks to run the compliance model.
Yeah, it's not an easy thing to do.
And they, and they won't run it with just, you know, that ten acres.
So, oh, I understand, that's why I'm saying, ju- you go with the Ken's Foods. Run that plus our ten through the compliance model. And then if that passes, is the concern that we would then end up in public hearings with? Potentially something that's out of compliance after that?
No, the the intention is to go through this effort, let them stick it through the um, compliance model. Find out where we are, after you do all your voting and pick these places. And then she's gonna come back and she's gonna have to tweak certain things, I don't know exactly how it goes. But it does have a lot to do with excluded land. So we have, we have to have parcels for her to work with. In order to find out where we are and if we will comply, and we shouldn't open the public hearing until we have something that complies. And if you want to tweak it after that, that's not a big deal, it's getting it started and run through the first time is the big, big deal. Takes a couple of weeks.
Go ahead, Marty.
No, I was just gonna say, so what I'm hearing from Jessie is that. If in area six and area seven, we can accommodate the fifty acres for MBTA. Is that the path of least resistance and we just go with that with the compliance model for Bowler? Am I, am I summarizing that correctly?
That's kind of what we did.
Yes.
And then you eliminate the other sections.
Yep.
Fourteen, nine and eleven.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we only ended up with six, twenty-one and seven. Those are the only three we're looking at now.
And area fourteen was a backup.
Yes.
In case we ran short for density calculations.
So I would support Jessie's thoughts.
So the only thing, the only thing I would point out that Ken's got one vote and Madison Place got three. And um. But. I I guess I could.
Right, and understand that that parcel ten which represents Ken's there, um, there is, there is um. Quite a bit of wetland that per- is around the perimeter, within the perimeter of that lot, um, so I think the. If you do vote to do that, you should include that if you do need additional parcel, that you either pick something out of the red area. Because that's contiguous to the ten, so that you should vote, if you pick. Ken's Foods, that the red area is a backup area to add to that.
What, so what, Mimi, the risk of picking, let's say we said, no, we're not gonna do Ken's Foods. We're gonna go with the Madison Place lot.
In the area twenty-one, you have to combo those.
Right. Got it.
Then we have this as a backup, and we also have that area fourteen.
On Boston Road, yeah.
So we've got some things to work with, if you chose Ken's, I would also ask her to put these three in, because they're adjacent. Um, just in case she needs them, because I know that when they do go through the compliance model. They don't know exactly what's going on, it's easier to take something out than it is to put something new in. So I would be a little bit generous with your areas.
How many votes did area twenty-one get?
There is quite a few, actually.
Yeah, I I mean, so twenty-one.
No, wait a second, there was only one.
Hold on, let's check for sure, yeah, area twenty-one.
Yeah, one.
One. I thought it was a big one, because it was over on the Marlboro side.
Go ahead, Lisa.
So, um, my only concern with adding Ken's is, as you said, Mimi. Based on who came to the forum, that it got three votes and um.
You got one.
It got one.
Right, and I, oh. Right, Ken's got one and and Madison got more. And if we're gonna be going through this and going through hearings. I'm kind of on the, I I get Jessie that it makes more sense and it's easier to do it that way, but based on the votes and the people that came to the. I don't want the people that came to the forums to think they weren't heard, so um, if we're gonna possibly change it, you know, through the public hearings. I'm actually supportive of the second option, which is twenty-one and the yellow section on this, only because I want people to feel. That they were heard at the hearing.
Well, Mimi, can I ask this, the red area there, do we know the acreage of that? If you don't pick twenty-one, which is remote from this area, if you had the yellow and the red here.
The red hashed?
Yeah.
They're not contiguous, though.
No, but they are a minimum of five acres, so you have twenty-eight acres contiguous.
Oh, okay.
With the Madison Place, right?
I think it's.
With the yellow? Let me see if I can see.
Eleven, eleven acres.
Eleven, okay, so eleven and. Twenty-eight, that might not be enough, that's why, let me see, eleven plus twenty-eight point five five. That is thirty-nine point five five plus ten point five, we're just at fifty acres. If you include the half, within the half mile radius, the ten acres, the twenty-eight and a half from Madison Place area. And the acreage you just said for the red area.
Yeah, so we, that probably wouldn't.
That's a little tight, you'd have to add another lot or two, yeah.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Can we, can I ask how many votes Boston Road got, sec- number district fourteen? I sort, I guess I sort of like the outskirts of town, I like twenty-one and I like fourteen, because they're closer to our neighboring towns.
But I don't think it's.
Not enough there?
Yeah, it got one, and it's only nine and a half acres, so we need something that's at least twenty-five.
Okay, so that um. Can we, so we, we're trying to piece together parcels to get to that total, right? But we need twenty-five, right?
Yes.
You need twenty-five in one area definitively.
At least, yeah.
Okay.
So that would be part of.
And that was, area seven was the only place we could. And that was, area seven was the only place we could get those contiguous parcels out of the twenty five acres together.
So I have.
The area in yellow, is that contiguous to Madison Place?
Yeah.
That is Madison Place, most of it.
That is already Madison. Okay, thank you.
And a cup, and three other lots.
Got it. Thanks for that.
The stripes are confusing me. Is it, is it lots three, four, and eleven? Or is it?
It's four, eleven, seven A, and seven, and one.
So is that the consensus? Like, are we making a motion on that, or?
Well, Colleen, are you sure area three was not included in that? I just want to say that, because when I'm looking at, um, the town mapping, that's actually a, um, lot three is an office building with parking.
She didn't include it in the catched area.
Okay. But it was included in consideration of area seven originally.
Yeah, that's helpful to put up the, uh, acreages. Thank you.
So how did that twenty eight point five go to twenty seven point six?
No, it's only, this, I'm going by the assessors. I actually got the acreage right off their, uh.
So for, for parcel four, one, eleven, seven, eight, and seven?
Yes.
I thought that's what she did, too.
Let me see what that acreage is.
I know Marnie's got to go, so I will do whatever the board wants to do, and we can, we can adjust as we need to through, through the hearing process. So whatever's easier.
I'm asking if I can delay the meeting by thirty minutes. So I'll let you know.
I think we're pretty close.
Yeah, we only have one other thing to look at after this, and I think you guys have already decided that.
So I just want to add, I was at the m- mapping sessions for both sessions, and at at the first one, I think, Marnie, you were with me, there was a whole table of people that didn't want any new development. They, they wanted a no vote. And so I guess I sort of feel that to put the zoning on Madison Place, which is already built, is kind of maybe a nod to them in some way.
I, I can understand that.
Because I, I, you know, we, and Marnie was very clear with them that night, their voices will be heard. So I don't really have a preference, to be honest, when I look at these. I think they're both fine. Um, but I, I guess to, to the people that wanted zoning where there's already high density, you know, buildings, residential zoning, I, I, I guess I feel close, more closely aligned to use the parcels that are surrounding Madison Place and the proposal, um, for the yellow.
So.
Is that a motion?
Go for it, Deb.
Um, I, I don't know how to make the motion. I, I may, I, you know, I may, I make a motion that the board choose the, um, twenty seven point six three five acre parcel as the, um, proposal for, uh, to comply with the MBTA, um, Communities Act.
Uh, do we want to just amend that? Because don't we need to add the other?
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Colleen, what are the other parcels to add to that?
To the twenty seven?
Yeah.
It would, I would assume it would be.
No, 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 no. No, it would be the twenty one, thirty four, Saint Martin Street.
Yeah.
Oh, this one.
Yes.
Yeah.
You can add that right along, sure.
That's area twenty one. And Colleen, did that include, um, it just included one parcel there, right?
Yeah, I took this other one out that was, because we, we talked about that. It, it, we didn't need it, and it's all wet. It would just screw up our numbers.
And how many acres was that?
This one is fourteen point five nine.
So if, if Debbie wants to amend her motion, how would she do that?
I would amend it to add parcel six dash seven with an area of fourteen point five nine acres to the previous motion.
Okay, thank you. And so I will, I will, I will make amendment to, um, the previous motion to add area six dash seven, um, to add the fourteen point five nine acres.
Just one thing, sorry, isn't it sixty point seven, Colleen?
Sixty da- sixty dash seven.
Sixty dash seven, okay.
Okay, so. I did, yeah, apologies. Okay, so amend the previous motion to add area sixty dash seventy, the fourteen point five nine acres.
Second. Oh, sorry, with comment?
Sure, go ahead.
So how, how much does that give us?
Fifty two point seven two.
And that's enough, you think, that with uh, water stuff and all that conservation, we should be able to meet our requirements?
I think.
Yeah, go ahead, Colleen.
I'm sorry, I, I was just going to show you Angela's thing, and we have the, this is a backup that she could add.
We can add.
You can come back and vote for that. Um, she's also got that area on Boston Road, I'm trying to think, fourteen. That's not it. It's ten. That one. So those are, this one could be a backup as well. So there's two good sized areas, um, that we could add in if this doesn't go through the compliance model properly.
Well, do you think the board should vote to say that, um, these two areas are to be considered for backup? Should we need additional space?
That would be wonderful.
So one more motion. And just, is there any question on those, though? Um, we already know area twenty one goes with the yellow area that we just picked, but area fourteen.
Yeah, I would make a separate motion for backup.
Um, which was area fourteen on Boston Road?
Yep.
In those parcels, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, I think they were, on Turnpike Road.
Yeah, area seven, um, which was, um, yes, parcels twelve, thirteen, and fourteen on area seven.
What's the one on Boston Road? But I can't recall.
That's the trucking company.
It's not, it's fourteen?
Yes.
Yep, area fourteen.
Should we vote first, then, are you saying, on the proposal, tw- area twenty one and area seven, and then a separate motion for fourteen? For one motion for all?
I, I think, let's vote on the motion on the table, and then a second motion on the backup.
So we have a motion and a second, and Marnie has.
Any more questions? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Lee Han, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Rashir, yes.
Okay, excellent. And now, now the backup. You want to take a stab on, on the motion on that, Jesse?
Um, Colleen, what was it again, please?
Um, area seven.
Area fourteen. And then the eleven point oh three acres, um, listed as backup on.
Area seven.
On area seven.
Parcel twelve, thirteen, thirteen, and fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Lee Han, yes. Demiria, yes.
Rashir, yes.
Very good.
Excellent. I'm excited.
So then this, these can be submitted to Bowler, and they'll, um, start putting them through the compliance model.
Yes.
But she felt pretty confident just doing quick calculations that, that we're in pretty good shape with either of these options.
Yeah, she made me feel very good.
Yeah.
So can we just recap? So what, we eliminated nine and eleven? No. Where's Boston Road?
Boston Road is, um, on the other side of.
Where, which one was that originally?
That was fourteen.
That was fourteen. Okay, so we have six, twenty one, fourteen, and seven, eliminating nine and eleven, which are our bottom two from our weighted rankings.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll update the spreadsheet, the maps, and we'll get this off to, uh, Angela at Bowler.
And will this be available for the public to see when you update, you'll update that on the website or whatever for the people to see?
Yep, and this is a recorded meeting as well.
Perfect. All right.
I, I did notice, I know you got to go, Marnie, but I did notice there was a lot of attendees. And there, I know there's some interest in the public about this process.
There's a lot of interest about this, yes.
Do people have two questions or concerns, maybe? Is that okay, Mimi?
Well, we are opening a, um, the public hearing process, which, uh, will take public input, and this is a working session. If you'd like to take questions, I'm certainly open to that, but I know Marnie has to.
I have delayed, so I'm okay till two thirty.
Cool.
It's, it's up to you as chair.
Are there any questions out there, number one?
Yes. We have two hands raised.
Hello.
Hello. Please identify yourself and your address.
I'm, I'm Ben Cohen. I'm at Two Harris, which is part of, uh, area three, which, uh, didn't make the cut recently. Um, I just, I, I attended last, the, two weeks ago, uh, working session, and by that time, I think the original zone wa- uh, area one, which was Stockwell Fitzgerald, had already fallen completely off of consideration, and I just didn't know why.
Oh, those were, uh, were deed restricted.
Okay.
This is Chris. Chris, are you?
I'm here. Yeah, hi. Good afternoon, Chris Legutsky here. Um, not, not a resident of, uh, of Southborough, but I am a representative for Graystar, which is a real estate operator and developer, um, and we are pursuing, um, acquisition of, uh, some parcels that I had outlined in a email to, uh, members of the board earlier, um, right, I suppose last night is when it came through. So my, my question is whether, um, the parcels that I'd, I, I had identified, which are located to the south of, um, Route nine, along the District nine, or sorry, seven, I believe, that was just discussed. If, uh, if those considerations that I had outlined might be able to be discussed briefly, and whether those parcels may be reconsidered for inclusion here, um, as a, uh, um, a, a, a potential district. Um, they are in total north of thirty five acres and, and could, in a, in a single cohesive location, um, achieve the, uh, the, the, the full scale of density that is required outside the half mile radius, so um, certainly a proponent of them, and, 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 um, and, uh, had, had laid out my thoughts and um, recommendations for the board in the email that was distributed. So if there's an opportunity to discuss that, I would greatly appreciate that, uh, but understand this is, you know, this is a working session, not a public hearing, uh, but, but those, uh, those are my thoughts and recommendations, if the board is willing to consider them.
Um, s- so thank you, Chris. And yes, we did consider them at our last working session, and we, um, put them through our criteria, and they didn't they weren't one of the high scorers. They didn't meet the, uh, our minimum threshold.
Understood. I, I think one of the, one of the, um, items was the, the open space preservation, um, and the, the priority open space, and, um, I, I want to just make sure that, that I, I understand how that was, um, how that was determined. Uh, I, I understand that there was a, a two thousand nineteen draft open space plan, um, that was prepared, and, and I also understand that the prior ownership of the, the, the overall property, which is in close to four hundred acres in total between Southborough and Westborough, um, the prior owner had made, um, pretty significant designations of other parts of their land for open space conservation. So I just wanted to make sure that the two parcels in, that, that I had noted, um, exactly, number five and six here, um, those weren't being confused with other restricted open space that is designated on other portions of, um, uh, of the owned land, uh, specifically land to the east and to the south has open space restrictions that are deeded and in place. Parcels five and six do not have any open space restrictions, so I was curious as to why this was, this was ranked a one, I believe, at a five on, on priority open space.
Um, because it was deemed a pro, they were deemed priority open space parcels. Understanding that they're not, uh, restricted in that way, but they were, uh, deemed in a uh, habitat study that was done as priority open space.
Understood, okay. Um, that, that study does not have any bearing, though, on the, the current in place zoning that allows for industrial park development on these parcels, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I appreciate the, um, the, the, the feedback on that piece, um, and, uh, and the attention to my, uh, to my email.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else calling?
Trying to look, there we go, yes, um, Ellen.
Hi, Ellen, please identify yourself and your address. Hello.
Either you're on mute, or I see who is, you can talk.
She's connecting now to audio.
Hello, Ellen, do you have a question?
We can let her play with her sound. You want to go to Paul Carter?
Sure.
Go ahead, Paul.
Hi, Paul, please identify yourself and your address.
He hasn't unmuted yet. Maybe we lost these people.
Can you hear me now, Colleen?
Yeah, I can hear you, yay.
All right, great. So, um, I think the planning board is doing great work here. My comments were, um, that the, uh, overlay districts be contiguous, um, that, that they, um, follow existing zoning lines if, if possible. Um, and, uh, I guess the, uh, I, I would put my support behind, um, area se- area fourteen. I think that offers a lot of potential. It's also near a very good transportation network on the ramps, which I think is important. Um, the other thing, general comment, I think that because we're dealing with this affordable housing and density of housing, that it's important that the planning board be responsible to the need for, uh, housing. So I think it's, I, I think I would recommend that the board take uh, proactive rather than a defensive role, uh, rather than identifying, you know, parcels that are in good use now, um, identify as much as possible parcels that would be appropriate for this high density housing. So I would suggest that rather than fighting this, um, mandate that, uh, the board work with it. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, Paul. Could you just identify yourself and your, um, address for our minute taker?
Sure, I'm six Hillside Avenue. The only other question I would ask is whether Colleen di- distributed, uh, the comments, the email that I sent last evening and this morning. It sounds like you guys were very busy with meetings and such, so no big deal.
I did not distribute it, I'm sorry, Paul. I was making maps.
Can you, can you distribute it, uh, Colleen, today?
Yep, I'll do it right after this.
That would be great. Once again, I, you guys are doing great jobs, but I really think the positive approach, rather than the negative approach, is more appropriate here.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's see if Ellen's ready.
Her hand is down now, Colleen.
Okay, so David Perry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, hi, David. Please identify yourself in your address.
Yes, certainly. My name is David Perry. I live at Twenty Main Street in Southborough. Well, my first remark is uh I listened to your last Zoom workshop meeting, which was a couple of weeks ago, I think. And then I listened to this one and I have frankly, great difficulty connecting the two. I think I listened to the entirety of the last meeting. And you had a whole lot of options. And then I start listening to this meeting. And I find us basically two or three options. And so there's a enormous chunk of information missing or which I simply don't understand. I I I can't put that in the form of a question. It's just that I think when you when you come to the public question and answer meeting coming up, you need to explain thoroughly how you went through these different steps. Cause if I can't, I'm I've been following you quite carefully and I was completely lost today, frankly, totally lost. Um, as to what happened between the two meetings. But obviously, you've had internal workshop sessions amongst you, and that's probably where the answer lies. The other point, so anyway, that's just sort of a task ahead for you to explain it thoroughly.
David, I think you joined our meeting late.
So.
I'm sorry?
If if I can address your question, um David, first, we haven't had any uh offline workshops offline. Uh, at our last meeting, we had twenty one different districts, which we applied our criteria to. And at the end of that meeting, we had six that were the the top scorers, for lack of a better term. Um, and then from those, we looked at the top ones and and how to comply. The half ten acres, half a mile from the train station, we needed at least twenty five acres of contiguous and um then it had to total at least fifty acres, which is how we ended up with the the three with the backups that we had today.
And those were the three top that ended up out of all the work we did. Those are the three top that they chose.
Okay. No, I I appreciate you try you trying to understand it. But by the way, it would have been helpful at the beginning of this meeting if you'd shown graphically what the options were gonna be up on the because we lis- we listened and listened and didn't really know what you meant about option X, Y and Z and so forth. So I don't want to be overly critical. It's just that, you know, it's it's gonna be very difficult for you to under for people to understand the process you're going through, which is very thorough. I appreciate your work. Yeah, the other, the other, just the last point I want to make is I do agree with Minister Carter, who said basically the town should be more proactive instead of anti multifamily housing and I I I just so strongly agree with that. There's just no point in coming up with parcels which are in very good high intensity use now. For instance, for R and D industry or whatever, or multifamily housing, and are extremely unlikely to be demolished in the next fifty years or so. For new higher density multifamily housing, that those are basically, there's negative propositions. They're gonna do nothing. They don't serve the aim of the law whatsoever. I think uh my suggestion is to be more positive and to pick parcels where there's a good chance of uh attractive multifamily housing being built. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
We have Ellen back.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Sorry for that.
Can you please identify yourself in your address, please?
Yes, Ellen Maria, one Witherby Lane. Um, and I did join a few minutes late, so I'm sorry if you addressed this at the beginning. But I was wondering in terms of the um two choices you were looking at at the beginning. The blue outlined area and the yellow outlined area within that half mile radius. Um, I was wondering why there was a need to pick one versus the other as opposed to including those both.
I was just, I mean, the board should, I I just thought we were trying to get just ten.
Well, that's a fair question, because I think theoretically, we would be in compliance with MBTA Communities if we did all of it. And I think um, I'll speak for myself. It's it seemed to me that along the line, sort of what Lisa said, to spread the impact around. Um, that was my thinking in placing uh the largest possible proportion outside of that area, since the area within the half mile is gonna be so directly impacted.
Mimi, can I add to that?
Yes, go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you. Very well said, Jesse, by the way. And and another reason, I think, is if you look at the south side of town along Southville Road, those are some of the most affordable homes in the town of Southborough right now. And to put the burden of twenty acres um and potentially losing those homes to me, and again, I'm speaking for me personally. That was a big concern in putting all of the uh, you know, doing both sides of Southville Road.
Can I just add, we also learned another technical uh piece of information this morning is that um if you go with sixty acres, say, then you have to provide thirty acres contiguous. So the contiguous parcel that is created is basically is based on, if your target is fifty acres, w- we have to have a twenty five acre contiguous parcel. If we add to the acreage in town, it has to be fifty percent of that. That's my understanding.
Right.
Thank you.
I think that's it, Mimi.
Marnie, thanks for uh extending out your meeting. Um, if there's anything, I'm I'm ready to make a motion to adjourn unless maybe there's any other business.
Just a quick administrative question. Should Colleen post a meeting for the Park Central hearing on uh the tenth? Are people planning on attending?
I'm in San Francisco.
If I'm there, I'll be via Zoom.
I I'll probably go, Mimi. In person.
Okay, so probably not a quorum. So we don't have to post.
That's fair.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Mimi, can I just ask what the next steps are and the timing?
So the so the next steps, as I understand it, is Bowler's gonna take these mapping and put it through the compliance model. And I guess we need to work on opening a hearing and work on the by- the zoning portion, the bylaw.
That's also under Bowler as well.
So are they gonna start doing that now, too?
They sh- yes, though, cause they'll be able to look at it. Karina had asked them during another meeting um where if they were gonna start from square one or what they were gonna do. And she explained that she was gonna go back and actually make it fit into our bylaws, what comes out of her thing. Yes.
Yeah, when you say her, it's Angela Bado at Bowler Engineering.
I'm sorry.
Is that contact?
Yeah, so we'll get the basic zoning from them, because she may have to tweak setbacks and whatnot. Um, but you know, then you guys can decide. You know, what what else needs to change in the in the written bylaw.
So the backup that we voted on, would that be a backup for the model in case the numbers aren't worked out? Or is that something that the board would choose before we write the bylaw?
It was a backup if the numbers didn't work out.
Okay.
Just one quick question, Mimi, if I may. So is is Bowler's working towards drafting, and again, just a draft bylaw? Um, I would assume, Mimi, that that obviously we're gonna be able to tweak it and edit it and add, you know, a ten percent affordable component or or whatever the board would like to see after the fact?
Yes, you can. They're not gonna write the bylaw and that's going to town meeting. You have to have your input.
Okay.
And then can you just remind us when our next planning board meeting is?
That, um, I'm sorry, January, oh, yeah, the eighth and then the twenty ninth.
Okay, so I'm gonna be in San Francisco. I won't be there on Monday.
Okay.
Okay, and just so you know, um, we'll be distributing um any packets. Uh, we have an accessory apartment application for a report from the planning board. Uh, we have a minor site plan. Um, and we'll be getting that agenda compiled this afternoon or tomorrow morning. Have Mimi approve it and then we'll send it out so everybody knows and put it on the drop box.
Thank you. Enjoy San Francisco.
I'm now looking forward to it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Lee Han, yes. Demiria, yes.
Rashia, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah. Bye, guys.
Bye, enjoy San Francisco.
Thanks, bye.
Bye bye.